All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:30. Jennifer, would you please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Kertal?
Here.
Ms. Juncle?
Here.
Ms. She?
Here.
Okay, we have quorum. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any requests to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Thank you. Can we please have a voice vote?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Kertal?
Yes.
Ms. Juncle?
Yes.
Ms. She?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public? Okay, seeing and hearing no public, we will move on. Staff reports, Kate?
So, it has been very chilly at the library. But the students have kept things nice and toasty warm. We've had our finals cafe happening from last week to now and a little bit of an extension of it due to some snow closures with GBN. So we will be expecting to see students in also this weekend because their finals go to next Tuesday. And I wanted to thank Stephanie Bremner, who's our teen librarian. She orchestrated all of the food and things that we did as well as coordinating to have everything organized here in the library from signage and marketing, working with marketing, to making sure all the staff felt comfortable knowing what was going on and even helping get the board here to help. And I wanted to thank everyone that came and served pizza. We're still debating what name Stacy gets as our four-time pizza passer outerer. We flitted vice president of pizza, princess of pizza.
It keeps looking like passer outerer.
Passer outerer pizza. It is a high distinction.
You know, on Saturday Night Live, if you do it five times, you get a green jacket. You want to come again?
I'll bring my own serpinoes in here.
So, this is always a wonderful, a wonderful time. I love finals and it's great to have all of the kids back in because the last few years have been, of course, a little bit different. So, it's always a really fun event. It has, however, been cold, as I said, and we have had, due to the really frigid temperatures, four windows crack. Anna has already reached out to the insurance company and there's, of course, long lead times for things and she'll be working on getting those replaced. But if you see some windows that are taped up, it is because they did indeed crack as a result of the cold. Anna and I had a fun little field trip around the library on Monday, I think it was. Was that the really cold day? Tuesday. Tuesday was a really cold day. And there was actually like frost inside and I'm like, oh my gosh, did all the window seals? We talked to the architect and found out that, no, actually, because the columns are solid steel, the cold just permeates. So, it was totally safe, no issues or anything, the building will still stand. But some fun little quirky things happen when it gets to like negative 20 below, it turns out, to be expected. We have a lot of things coming up and just as a reminder, although I know I've sent out a couple, this Saturday, we have our strategic plan retreat. We are also doing photos. And so just to confirm one more time that the photos are going to happen. And Namesha is going to be popping in and out because you, I forget what it is that your sons have.
Um, science fair.
Oh, that's awesome. But you're gonna, we're gonna make it happen with the photos and then you're gonna be...
Are we doing the photos at nine or before nine?
We're gonna do them right at nine.
Perfect. I wasn't sure if it was at 8:30 or if it was at nine.
No, we're just gonna do them at nine and then immediately after, you guys can change into sweatpants if you want. And then do this strategic plan meeting.
Where do you want us to meet?
We're, we'll just meet in Civic and then we'll go upstairs to the second floor so you can dump all your stuff there. And, because this question did come up, we're gonna have coffee with pastry things.
Bagels and fruit.
Bagels and fruit is what I meant when I said pastry things. So, there will be caffeine as well as uncaffeinated things like water. Next week, we do have a couple art receptions. We're doing two art exhibits right now with the Northbrook Arts Commission. One is up on the second floor and it's called The Serve and Protect and it is focusing on the police and fire departments and shows photos of them out and about doing, doing the work that they do to serve the community. And so next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there'll be our reception. We will have, I believe, almost all of the village board, if not all of the village board, will be over here. If you are available to come, it would be lovely to have anyone on the board that is available. We also have then that Thursday, the landscape painting with our award-winning local artist, Brian Sandler, the reception for that at 6:00 PM. You may have noticed his artwork as you walked in, in the lobby. It's simply stunning. So we will be having that at 6:00 PM. And then Friday, we're switching to an early morning, well, not that early, at 9:00 AM. President Cecil will be doing the State of the Village address here in the auditorium for the second year where we partner with the village and the chamber to host that. And then all of the, the chamber has a small reception ahead of time. And then anyone in the community that's interested can also come and then it's also recorded and shared. So this is a great way to get info about what's coming up at the village and also for our community to be able to connect with their elected officials. So if you are available and/or interested in all or any of those, please let me know and I'll make sure that I have your name down.
Just be able to do the, hopefully, a Thursday one.
Okay, fabulous.
I think I...
Yeah, I already got you, so we're good. I will be out of town for all of them. We planted in the wrong area. We'll do better next year, so. And then I have more updates. I did want to mention in the packet, I did have the Palm Card from ILA. We had the legislative meetups. I was supposed to go and was sick when I got back and so I did not. However, Anna went with Stacy. Thank you. I'm like, oh crap, I can't remember right now. But I did want to mention just a couple of the things that the Illinois Library Association is focusing on in their lobbying efforts this year. One is that our current bid threshold is $25,000 and for park districts, it's 30. So we're asking for us to be at the same level. We also spend a lot of money every year on e-resources, so think downloadable books, audiobooks, streaming music, movies. And the ebook pricing is not equitable for libraries. The publishers charge us sometimes, you know, 10 times more than what they're charging to customers and they also will often put restrictions on where we can't get access to it until it's been out for six months or they'll sell it to us for a more reasonable price, but you can only keep it for a year. And so this is an ongoing issue. Several states have been seeking ways to make this more equitable and this is something that the Secretary of State feels strongly about, as does the library community. And so this is something that they're planning to be working on. There is going to be a great deal about broadband in the next few years and making sure that libraries have access to strong internet. We know that we are a vital resource for people in the community. And yes, even in communities like Northbrook where you make assumptions, like everybody has it, we have a lot of people that come here, maybe their power gets knocked out, maybe they need a stronger signal, maybe they don't have it. We are a really key resource for that. And so Kelly has been following along with all of the funding that is available and through the state. And this is an area that libraries are making, wanting to make sure that we receive some of the dollars that are going to be coming down federally to make sure that we can provide high levels of internet access for our communities. And then I think Anna's favorite thing, they are seeking to decrease the amount required for the annual treasures bond. So it, for most municipalities, you only need to have 5% of your operating budget and for libraries, it's over 50%. So they are seeking to bring it down. And so those are some of the things that we're gonna be working on with the legislature, hopefully in the coming year. I also wanted to mention, along the lines of legislators, I don't know if everyone saw, but our state representative, Jonathan Carroll, did step down from his seat in the house and Tracy Katz-Mull has been appointed in his spot. We were able to, they needed meeting room space to hold the meetings, so we were able to do that last week and then Tracy was sworn in over at the village hall. So she will be our new state rep and we're excited to have her, to have such a strong library supporter and such a strong library user representing us in, in the state. And then the last thing I have is actually something for Kelly. The, I'm gonna say it wrong, CISA, CISA report is something to talk a little bit about internet security.
Yeah, so on page 51 in the packet, there is this really nice-looking data sheet. The CISA report is something that is provided through the Department of Homeland Security and it allows us to see if we have any vulnerabilities with our assets, which are our IPs, as well as our host, which is our VPN and easy proxy. This is something that is exciting to us because while we have been taking advantage of this report for a couple of years, we're part of a digital consortium through the school district, 225, it's a technology consortium. And they always got the reports and they would tell us if there were any vulnerabilities, which has only happened once in my tenure. But we were finally able to get that data ourselves. So being able to see the data and see what they're looking at and understand where that the assets and hosts and things are, what they're actually looking at, is really helpful. And so far, we've been on it since November 4th, we haven't had anything come back. So it's also just nice to know that this is something that the Department of Homeland Security is supporting at a federal level. And I did also just want to mention, when we're talking about broadband, one of the things to know about our consortium is that is where the library gets their internet from. And the consortium is making some changes because the state made it possible for schools to get internet at a reduced rate and public libraries were not a part of that. And so our...
They're getting it for free. They're getting it for free.
Our, our consortium now is needing to look at the fact that we are actually costing them money to be a part of it, starting in 2025. So there's major changes coming and we've been looking for other options at this point. So, we're to come on that. But as you are out in the community and doing your advocacy work, talking about affordable broadband is definitely something that we need, even though we are a well-funded library in a well-funded community.
So did I hear right that we will no longer be part of the consortium in a year?
Well, we do have the option to pay into the consortium. So we, that is an option that we'll look into pricing out.
Kelly's doing the research on it. It is still a little vague. They haven't presented us with anything concrete yet, so it's still a little amorphous.
When do you think they'll get something more concrete?
I would guess closer to summer. I'm meeting with Lori Baker, who's the IT person at the village, to talk about options. They only use the fiber line as a backup. So I'm gonna see what the village is using for internet and look into some other options. Some, OSG works with other public libraries. We're looking at what other libraries in the area are using, a lot are on Comcast.
We were previously on ICN, which is a state-run product, and their costs were significant and we were able to save about 90% on our insurance costs, switching to fiber from two T1 lines, which was a significant increase in speed and a significant reduction in cost. And that was, I'm looking at Kelly, she's not gonna remember, yeah, it was a while ago, six or seven years.
I just had a call with someone from Secretary of State, Janulius's office, this week as well, and they're aware of this issue and looking at federal funding for this area as well.
Here's your free internet. And that's all that I have unless anyone has any questions on anything else for me or for Kelly.
Okay, seeing and hearing no questions. Next item on the agenda is board member reports. Do any board members have anything they'd like to report?
I think you covered it.
I'll talk about pizza. I did not manage to go as many nights as Stacy, but I did enjoy my night. It was very cold and I was sure there'd be nobody here. I was very wrong. It was jammed here in this room and I think the students really appreciated and we had a very good time passing out of pizza. Bring us here.
Anybody else? I guess the only thing to say, Barbara, is we're all sorry to hear of your personal loss. Our condolences are with you.
And thank you all for the beautiful flowers and beautiful notes that accompanied. So, I appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. First item of that is the auditorium rentals policy presentation, so a little bit of a discussion. And this is Ariel's presentation?
Correct.
Ariel, if you'd like to take it away?
Sure. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry I couldn't be there with you tonight. Got a little bit of a sore throat. Don't want to, just being safe, you know, it's that time of year. Okay, can you all see that?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so you probably, or hopefully, I guess, remember me from before. My name's Ariel. I'm the events production manager here and I'm here to talk to you about opening the auditorium to residents for rental. The library frequently has inquiries from the community. Just the other day, I got an inquiry. We also get a lot of program proposals that would be better suited as a rental than an actual program that's put on by the library. So residents as well as non-residents are looking for an intimate but affordable space to hold recitals, concerts, lectures. We're, opening the auditorium for rentals would fill the gap that these potential renters are seeking. And when I talk to other local venues, they're booked out for a full year, they don't have any space for these, a lot of people. In fact, oftentimes they'll have a couple people call a week that they cannot provide a space to. So we would like to ensure that the auditorium is able to be used by our residents, not only for library events, but also for private events. And while this project will be a service to our community in the same way that a room booking is, it will include a new fee-based rental system. But there will be hands-on technical support, which we do kind of get with our meeting rooms, but not in the same way. This will be basically people who are changing the lights, changing the sound for you as you need. And the potential ability to book the auditorium space outside the normal library operating hours, we are not going to be doing that in our first year, but it is something we are interested in potentially pursuing in the future. The auditorium was renovated in 2015, as you know, and is a state-of-the-art event space. And I think that if we open it up, then we're ensuring to our patrons that the space that they paid for is being used and it will also provide Northbrook taxpayers a little perk. With that said, uh, oh, yeah, okay. So with that said, I just want to outline my goals with this project and that is, one, to provide Northbrook residents the opportunity to rent a state-of-the-art space with technical support at an affordable cost. Auditorium rentals will provide an opportunity for low-cost auditorium usage. I also wanted to create a fee-based rental system, similar to how other spaces provide or charge their patrons, but we want to offer, or we want to make sure that we're operating as close to recovering costs as possible. We also want to fill the gap in a service that is frequently inquired about. As mentioned, the library does receive calls, so we know that the need is out there. We also know that the park district receives, pretty much only services the park district. So if there are Northbrook residents who are seeking a space, that is not really a space that's available to them. And finally, we want to provide renters with technologically and procedural staffy, savvy staff who can assist them as they learn what the space can provide them with. And so here I've got a bit of a timeline laid out for you for what I'm hoping will happen. That being said, it does take some teamwork with you guys and also with internally at the library. But I'm here in January presenting to you guys. Over the next two months, we're hoping to finalize the meeting room policy. And then in the spring, April and May, we are going to be training both my staff, events production staff, as well as our contractors on using the space in a way that's slightly different than usual. Serving renters is kind of a different style of service. And then I'm hoping that in June, we can announce the auditorium rentals in the public newsletter. And then in July, we can begin allowing renters to inquire and that would mean that our earliest rental would be July 21st. So when it comes to workflow for renters, their experience is going to be that they inquire via our reservation system. We will require that they book at least three weeks before the event because we're going to have to organize with contractors, the contractors who will be, you know, the sound and lights techs for the space. The potential renter will need to sign a contract, they'll need to provide a proof of liability event insurance for the day of the event. And then they will also provide full payment upon booking. And they will be able to use our usual system, which I'll kind of get into, but they can of course pay via website, self-check, or providing a check to admin. On our end, events production will review the application, will do walkthroughs with the renter and will discuss their needs and make sure that the space is comparable for what they're looking for. You know, we don't have a fly space like some theaters, so we're not going to be flying in any big drops or scenery anytime soon. But we, so we want to make sure that what they're looking for is what we have. And then we also will have to go ahead and finalize all that paperwork, file it, and then put their information on our backend system to book them. And we'll also make sure that at least one events production staff member will be on-site during the event to answer questions from contracted staff, to ensure that the event is in compliance with library policy. When it comes to payment processing, events production will enter the charge into the cardholder's account. So this will be a similar, like, payment system as to what we already have with the Pollock Room and the $50 piano fee, but renters will pay in full at the time of booking. And all charges will be paid via Plaris under rental fee. As with our other services, the library is going to cover the 5% fee if the fees are paid at self-check. And then obviously there are no additional fees to be applied when paid online or via check. For refunds, we, renters can request a full refund within 24 hours of contract signing, $50 fee after 24 hours. And then two weeks before the event, only 50% of the full payment can be refunded. This is in line with our discussions with the contractors. They have the same policy, no refund if canceled less than 48 hours before the scheduled rental. So, yeah, we want to make sure we're able to pay the people we've hired. As for how long it will take to process the refund for the renter, we have, we're going to make it known that it will take 45 days to process, in line with the Prompt Payment Act and additionally because these checks are going to be over $600. Before I get into costs too much, I just do want to say that like while these costs look really expensive, they are comparable to the market. I'll get into it in another slide, but I have looked at eight other venues and our slide, our costs are going to be cheaper than what other venues are offering. And other venues stack additional charges, a lot of times, onto the cost such as security requirements or cleaning fees or, or charges for using additional rooms, like if a place booked a meeting room. Or with the equivalent of us booking a meeting room for the renter in addition to them using the venue itself, the cost for the green room and these charges stack up. So, all this being said, like, this looks like a lot, but it's actually very comparable to the market and we'll get into what ours is going to look like, but I just want to say that before I get into this first estimate. Which is something I pulled together for a piano concert, they would have the space for a minimum of three hours. So we would charge $25 for a microphone. And I pulled data from the, what I would consider to be the closest comparable space to us, which is the Buffalo Grove Art Center. They have a similar structure to what we're looking to do. They do some park district events, but they do a lot of rentals and they also work with contractors. So they would charge $65 for a microphone while we are planning to charge only $25 a microphone, $75 for our piano. I know our Pollock Room piano is a $50 charge, but the piano in the auditorium is slightly higher quality. And then Buffalo Grove Art Center charges $100. Buffalo Grove Art Center also charges a fee for their light-end audio system. So that would be stacked on, we are not planning to charge for that at all. And then for two staff, it would cost $120 for us, or per hour, so total of $360. But for Buffalo Grove, it's going to charge the renter $525 and their hourly rate is, for us, it's $150 an hour, but for them, it's $155. And so you can see the difference is, for us, it would be a total of $910 and then for them, it's a total of $1,280. This would be for a local business half-day meeting. Pretty much the only thing I changed out here was the projector and the timing. So you can see that for us, it would cost $1,475 and then for the Buffalo Grove Art Center, it would pay about $1,990. So these are all the venues that I looked at when I was looking at cost comparison. I looked at their equipment costs, I looked at their hourly rates, I looked at their staffing. Like I said, they all have slightly different systems to cover their costs, like some places charge extra for, for meeting rooms, some places charge extra for cleanings. So if you went to every one of these venues, you would never be able to find like the same exact quote. But just now that I, no matter where you go, it's going to be pricey. And I have put us in comparison, oh, those numbers on the side there also are the capacity for each space. So for us, it's 225. Obviously, the Buffalo Grove Art Center is a little bit larger than ours, but like I said, their pricing model is more comparable to what we are looking at. So, cost comparison. This is kind of the market that I read. For us, we're charging $150 an hour. The average for the area is 178.3 and then the median is 150. So we are like right in line with that hourly rate. When it comes to staffing, most places actually require three people to run their space, a lights person, a sound person, and a stage manager. But since we do not have a backstage, it's not really an option. So most people take three staff people to run a full event while for us, it will only take two. So those prices might look low, but they actually require you, in many cases, to have three people in the venue at a time. And then for us, like I said, we're not going to be charging for cleaning. The average seems to be about $75 and then the median is $62.5. And then this is a breakdown of equipment costs. We are planning to charge $25 for a mic. Market average is $45. Podium, $10. Market average is 20. The projector, we're planning to charge $100 because it is a very high-quality projector. And then the average cost is $145. Laptop, we are planning to charge $50. That being said, most venues do not allow... Um, laptop, we are planning to charge fifty dollars. That being said, most venues do not allow or offer people a laptop to rent at all. Um, they require them to uh, bring their their own, so, but I think, you know, it's a nice service. We already have laptops here. Uh, and then as for piano, seventy-five dollars while most places, the average is about one thirty-one dollars. And then auxiliary sa- sound system, this would be a sound system that we would set up in the case of someone doing like a large, a larger concert. So they wouldn't be able to use our house uh, mic system. They wouldn't be just talking into the mic. This would be, you know, amplification. It would be a possibly guitar, um, bass, uh, whatever it might be. I don't know, synth. Um, and the market average for that is three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So what kind of events do I think we can expect? Well, I think we're looking at staff meetings and trainings. We're looking at recitals and acoustic concerts. I think we're looking at film screenings. I think we're looking at concerts with amplification. Um, and I think sometimes we might be looking at live theater. Uh, and with that, I'll hand it over to Kelly.
Thanks Ariel. Um, yeah, so um, in line with all of this, we're going to need to update some of our policies. Um, specifically, we're looking at our meeting room policy as well as our public code of behavior. I'll explain that in a minute. Um, but the main things we're trying to, we'll need to update in policy is um, right now, the policy currently states that the auditorium is not available for outside users. It's just for internal use. We will be creating appendices that will separate out the civic, pollock, and interactive classrooms from the auditorium so that um, when residents are booking any of those three other spaces, they will be following a set of rules and the auditorium rentals um, will be in a separate area on the policy. We're looking at um, and we still need to consult with our attorney, but allowing ticket sales for private events. Um, so if a renter wanted to charge attendees, we're hoping that is something they will be able to do. Um, and they would handle all of the money exchanged. That wouldn't be done through the library. We, and this is where the patron pub- public code of behavior comes in. We are looking at allowing folks to sell items as well. Right now, our public code of behavior says no solicitation. Um, but we are hoping that for private events, folks who wanted to sell things would be able to, as well as um, expanding that into library events. So if we have authors or musicians, um, things of that nature, they could sell their intellectual property, their books and music as part of the event. Um, again, that's something we need to talk to our attorney about, um, but that's a change we're hoping to make. Um, we're going to be adjusting timing for outside bookings. As Ariel mentioned, we need to have some time to hire outside contractors for rentals. Um, we also internally for um, spaces like the Pollock Room need to have time um, for staff to be able to book for programming and things. So we're kind of adjusting some of those timelines. Um, we're looking at changing the minimum age for renters. The civic, pollock, and interactive classroom will remain eighteen, but we were hoping to do twenty-one and up for the auditorium. It's a, it's a large space. Um, a lot of responsibility goes into hosting an event in that um, space, so hoping just to raise that age up a little bit. There's going to be a little bit additional language about fines and fees as Ariel um, detailed out. We're looking at adding a lot of fees um, with this proposal. Um, and then um, liability insurance will be required by the rentals, so that will be laid out in the policy as well.
Okay, so um, thank you for having me and uh, it's time we'll take any questions you might have.
Couple of quick questions. On the insurance piece, for organizations that may not already have um, the type of insurance needed in place, are we going to be able to refer them to a vendor for the insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Product, oh, go ahead Ariel.
Sure, yeah. So it's, uh, what it's called is a day of liability insurance, so it's basically a one-day coverage. Um, but we have already reached out to local venues to find out what uh, insurance companies they're accepting. And so we've uh, curated a list that we can provide to renters for that, that that's like a list of legit places they can go.
And then on the age limit that you were mentioning, Kelly, I would think that, you know, some of the high school organizations would be interested in wanting to use the space. So it sounds like though we would be restricting them or at least requiring them to have a sponsor.
To have an adult.
Yeah.
Yeah, who's responsible for it.
Other questions?
I have a couple. What, um, how is this going to affect parking? Because parking can all sometimes already be an issue, so.
What you mean are overly generous and so much space parking.
Exactly. It's so easy to navigate.
Yes.
Like, so I guess, are we going to, are you going to end up with a bunch of crabby patrons?
So, so that's a, that's a great question. Um, right now, I uh, we, we're not really sure, but that being said, what I am planning to do is never book the auditorium at a time when we have like something else going on. So like if there's like, you know, this is going to be, the booking availability is going to be much based on library and staff bandwidth. You know, this isn't going to be the full-time thing that we're doing. It's just going to be something extra that we're doing. So we're never going to book an event when there's a Pollock event. We're never going to book an event when there's a big civic event. Um, uh, that being said, I would even consider interactive classroom potentially. Um, so we're going to make sure that there's most amount of parking available, but it would be potentially in line um, with some of our, hosting our, you know, own personal library programs.
Couple of other questions I had. One, you mentioned numerous times that there wouldn't be a cleaning fee. Why is that? Because it seems like there are small things that are going to happen that wouldn't be covered by someone's liability insurance, but also shouldn't fall to um, the library, like sort of minor things. So what's the, just curious what the rest?
They're not allowed to bring food or drink inside.
Okay, so nothing like that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
All right, so that's going to stay. Okay, that, that's a huge help. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the biggest.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Is that, okay.
And the space is cleaned already as part of our normal operations, so it, we're hoping it, it's not going to be a big addition, although that is something we will have to monitor in the first year and see if it does.
If it does increase the.
Yeah, and that's something that, um, you know, Kelly and Ariel have done, that obviously a ton of light work already on this. And they've talked about like, what are the things that we're going to look at in that first year, really kind of seeing what is reasonable in terms of timing? Can we offer people to book it longer? Can we shorten it? Or do we need to have a cleaning fee? So I, I see this as we have a pretty good sense. Uh, Ariel has done a tremendous amount of research and there's probably going to be things that are unexpected. And so we'll be monitoring to see at the end of the first year, what, what worked, what didn't, what, we'll probably be coming back with changes to the policy of like, hey, we now learned this, so.
Um, and then my other is just sort of about, is there any way of, I don't know, not this delicately. What happens if the um, if a group comes in that wants to rent the space but isn't really in keeping with the mission of the library? How do, and I'm sure that we, that could happen with other spaces that people who want to use the library, but this is more public. It's a larger group. And it's more outside, so I'm just going to use a, you know.
Sure.
Example like, you know, a group that like in favor banning books or something absurd like that. So what happens like in that case if it's?
Yeah, that's actually covered in the meeting room policy now.
And it would be the same policy?
Yeah, and and keeping in line of being an institution of learning and um, avoiding censorship. Those groups are allowed to book the meeting rooms at this point in time and um, that would be something that would continue with the auditorium rentals. Um, but it is something we um, definitely watch now and look out for in terms of safety and security for staff and patrons. If we do know that there's going to be um, somebody using a space where um, like occasionally if um, a representative from Congress comes, the police might get an alert that there's extra security needed and our local police department will come out and things like that. So I, I think that would be in keeping that if we knew ahead of time, we would definitely put um, extra security in place and, and make sure that staff were aware and felt like psychological safety as well.
Okay.
As that's happening.
That brings up a good point. Is the, because we've heard some comments that the staff, um, in some of the surveys that the staff feels um, that they have a lot on their plates. Is the staff all on board with this plan and people are?
I would say so, and I, I think it is definitely um, within Ariel's department. Um, it's not something that is going to bleed out um, beyond facilities, events production, maybe a little bit of IT. And because we're hiring contractors to do a lot of the, the technical work, um, I think staff bandwidth is going to be really good for this.
And that's something that, and I know Ariel, sorry, I didn't mean to, like I, like girl Ariel, like how are you going to make sure that we're not overextending and book, in, in taking too many bookings? And, and so she, she knows that this is something that Kelly and I are both going to be watching. Um, because we don't want to burn staff out. We don't want that. This is something that, you know, Ariel and her staff are excited about and because you're excited about something doesn't mean it can't burn you out.
Right, right.
Sorry, just to clarify, the two staff members that's quoted in the presentations are?
Are outside.
Contractors, I'm sorry, we got a little bit confused.
So there will be one of us onsite, uh, but we won't necessarily be working the event and that will give us time to, you know, process paperwork, do our usual jobs. Um, but the contractors who are running the event uh, will be on, like, like more actively participating in the event, running the lights and sound projection, uh, and then also stage.
So, correct. So when we have the hundred and fifty dollar an hour fee for the space, that includes using the physical space, but that also incorporates Ariel and her staff's time into it. And then the staff cost is the outside contractors that are, that we're contracting with. Um, I cannot remember a single one of the names of the companies that Ariel has researched right now, but they're going to be.
They're two local companies.
Yeah.
So that's the two, like, sorry, that's the two, that's, and then we know the price, that's why.
Yes, that's why the price is what it is, because it's based on their pricing.
I, I, sorry.
No, no, I'll follow up.
Oh, okay.
Keep going.
Oh, just like along that line, like, I don't know, like in my mind, like there's another piece, like the security, I don't know, like I know the events where we think we're going to have our meetings, but just because it's a larger space, there are potentially more people. Is there like a security risk? Like, are we equipped to manage like, you know, a little bit out of control situation or how are we good? Are we thinking of?
Can I jump in Ariel?
Okay, go ahead.
We, we have contracted with a security company and if Ariel feels that that is needed, we can hire them to come in and assist with security.
Okay.
And those fees would be charged to the group, correct Ariel? That's what we talked?
That's correct, yeah. I haven't laid it out in this presentation, but we would charge an hourly security fee if we felt like the event needed it.
Like I was more thinking of like, like on the spot, like things.
Unexpected.
Control, yeah, and like, you know, like our security person is not, like, does not in his current job description to.
Right.
Manage a more intense situation. I guess that's what I had in mind in terms of.
Yeah, yeah, I, here's what I'll say about, you know, other venues. I, I've been at a venue where they required a security person to be hired um, for certain types of events where they felt like there was a lot of people moving through the space uh, and didn't require it for all events. Uh, and then I've been at a space that never hired a security person at all. So it really ranges.
Yeah, I think that, I think we just have to be cognizant that whoever's using it, that the, the patrons coming through are still going to be are not necessarily the same people using the space. So we still have families and um, you know, everyone is welcome, but I think we have to respect the, the patrons and making sure that they're comfortable at all times.
Not comfortable enough to be allowed to eat in the space.
Right, no, not that.
But there are lines.
Yes, and then I just have one more question. No, no, I, I think I. Oh, are other libraries, do other libraries in the area offer something like this?
So there's not that many libraries in the area that have auditoriums. Um, so it's really hard to measure against anything local. Uh, I will say that there are other libraries that have auditoriums across the country. Um, and they follow similar systems to what I've presented here. Uh, the Chicago Public Library does have an auditorium. Uh, they do ticket sales. They have a system similar to this, so uh, it, yeah, it's hard to compare. But I will say that other park districts, even though they're not, you know, in a library, almost all of them, they're not operating on like a make-money type of basis. They are operating at cost recovery. So they have a similar mission to what we're hoping to do.
I can interject for a second, Ariel. Before the renovation in twenty fifteen, the old auditorium, that was open for public. So this is not like it's a new situation for our library specifically. It's just that once we renovated the auditorium, the decision was made that we did not want to open up to outside parties other than the staff. Initially, number one, because of the fact that it was new and cost a hell of a lot of money.
Yeah.
Uh, number two, because we want to make sure the staff was able to figure out how to use the space, what would fit within the space and to give them priority. And then number three, we didn't know if we were going to have the ability to use the space more than what the staff was going to use it for, so we didn't want to put them in a situation of having to deal with that until they were comfortable enough with the space. So it's, you know, been a lot longer than we maybe initially had expected to open it up. You know, the, one of the issues we had before though was there were limitations on when we would have events for the outside because of the parking that you mentioned. I think there used to be a prohibition on having it out, opened outside at the same time that the village was having significant events or meetings so that the parking overflow wasn't going to create a problem.
It also helps uh, in terms of, one of the other big parking pain points of the past was the commuter lots and they, there was, before the pandemic, um, a significant look by the village to say like, where can we create more spots? Because there wasn't enough. Now that isn't an issue. And so there were, um, I would say even during like the day, there were fewer spots in the area also open. I feel like that also played a role with some of this, so.
I would just like to say that the report was wonderful. It was thoughtful, organized, very much um, appreciated in terms of answering the questions that we would have. And so Ariel, thank you, and Kelly, thank you. Very well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions before?
Um, just a comment. I echo Barbara's comments there as well. Really good job on putting it together. And um, one thing to keep an eye on since it's new is um, statistics and feedback, just that we can all learn. You know, even accruing like, there's going to be wear and tear on the equipment and stuff like that, but uh, you have comments about like business meetings, some of the ideal use cases, like I think that they would, they would want refreshments. Otherwise, they don't want to have that meeting space for two hours, right? So there's little things that you're probably going to pick up on in the feedback as well and post-clean-up and stuff. So I think we're going to learn a lot and I think it's a great opportunity.
Oh, yeah, and we are already thinking about that and we are, we put together a sheet that's going to allow us to track inquiries and um, we'll be able to track why people decided not to use the space so we can see what those barriers to access are. Um, and uh, there was one other thing I was going to say. I can't remember it.
And we do allow eating in the Pollock Room, so there is always the option of reserving this space, which doesn't cost them anything, uh, and doing
Refreshments.
Refreshments in here in addition to, so I know that was something that Kelly and Ariel had thought about, like how, how to bridge that so that we can keep the auditorium as pristine as possible.
All right, well, thank you, Ariel.
Thank you. Thank you. And um, just a little uh, reminder of what's going to be next. Uh, we are going to be training um, staff and contractors in the spring and hopefully by the June newsletter, we'll have this out for the public to um, advertise to them. So, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an update on the heating, ventilated and air conditioning chiller repairs. So Anna, would you like to?
This is Fred Valentini from Thermo Systems. He is a chiller guru, multi-stack chiller guru. And he has helped us quite a bit. But Fred works, like I said, for Thermo Systems and Thermo Systems is part of the Omnia Purchasing Cooperative. So that allows us to just work with them directly because they have already publicly bid all of their work. They were a multi-stack representative, so they, their technicians have been trained with the multi-stack chiller. They no longer are the representative for the area, but the gentleman Aaron, who still works for Thermo Systems is the gentleman who installed the chiller, right Fred?
Uh, no, uh, he, we started it up, but let me back up by saying I'm, I'm not a guru. I'm not a technician, but I've been around this industry a long time and, and familiar with HVAC equipment. So Thermo Systems sold, we, at that time, we were the rep for multi-stack. And we were, we are, were factory trained and we still are. And our company sold the chiller to the contractor that the library hired to install it. And then our, one of our technicians, uh, it was a gentleman by name of Terry, who's has retired. He's the one who started it up, uh, when the system was started up. That was about what, seven years ago, Anna? Is that right?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, yeah. So, right. But Aaron, as you mentioned, he was the one that when you called us, uh, when you started having problems, Aaron was our tech that went in to troubleshoot it and found the issues. And then based on that is where we're at today.
So based upon all of the work that we've done, we are recommending to rebuild slash replace the pieces that have, that are not working in the existing chiller and allow Thermo Systems to do that work. We are still working through the contract and we are asking the board to, there's a resolution that the attorney has put together for you guys to approve that. No.
Remember, there's no resolution, there's just the.
Oh, the motion, sorry. A motion, sorry. That Jay will read off, but to have you guys approve that. And then once the attorney approves and Thermo Systems approves the contract, then we can move forward, which we're hoping to do within the next week or so. But in the memo that I put together, I've kind of detailed out the timeline of everything that's happened and everything that we've done to kind of get to the point where we are today. And does anybody have any questions? I know we've talked about this a couple of times, but Fred is here to help answer any questions that I cannot answer.
Sure. So once we go through with the contract, then there's going to be an analysis?
Correct. Thermo Systems, as soon as the contract is signed, actually, Thermo Systems will come out and will take apart the one section that has completely failed. And I think part of section two, right Fred? And we're going to send that to multi-stack. And we're going to have it forensically tested to see what caused the failure.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, you, you had talked to multi-stack and they recommended that. And what we're doing is we're just facilitating it by, we have to remove all the components that were damaged anyway, and that's one of them. And it will be sent to multi-stack and then they will send you a report analyzing and hopefully indicate what caused it or be able to prove what caused it.
Questions, anybody? Based upon the proposal, any?
Once we've sent those components, how long would it take to do that analysis and produce that report?
I don't know if we have that information Janet. I mean, I don't think it's going to take that long. I can look.
Are any of these three options, um, are there differences in this sort of sustainability? Is one system going to be more sustainable than the others? Or is it?
I mean, like switching from a water chilled to the air chilled system as opposed to, or just replacing entirely instead of rebuilding, repairing?
Yeah.
One second Janet, it will take approximately five months to get a response. I'm sorry, say that again.
So my question is, we, we're looking at, you know, the three different options and there is a, a recommendation for one. Is there, is the consideration of sustainability a factor here? Or are they all pretty much the same?
Well, I mean, yes, because we wouldn't be throwing away all of the pieces. We're only taking the unit, the, the pieces that have broken.
Okay.
So we're, we're retaining everything else that works and that hasn't been affected by the, the water and the rid line. To get rid of the whole thing and replace it with an air cooled chiller, there would be items that still worked thrown away. So yes, we are considering sustainability.
Okay. And an air cooled chiller is not necessarily a more sustainable way to.
Like in terms of ongoing?
Ongoing.
Like energy usage of the chiller?
Right.
I, the only, the only thing I will add to that, and it's probably maybe a wash sustainability, the, an air cooled chiller generally is less, less maintenance intensive. And, and, and Anna and I have had several conversations about that. So, and the other aspect with what you have now and what you will continue to have being a water cooled chiller is ongoing water treatment, the chemical treatment of the water. And that's, that is a, that is a, an ongoing maintenance item that has to be watched.
We are using a sustainable company for the water treatment.
Right, right.
Not a significant consideration is what I'm hearing.
No, yes, all right.
Just a question about the forensic exercise that you'll be performing. If the, that rid line was a potential cause of some of these problems, you're expecting a more detailed, like root cause of?
Yes.
What, what happened? And that'll include all the different componentry that's affected, I assume?
Right.
Okay. So it's, cause there was another gentleman involved, right? With sort of the review previously of?
Correct, that wasn't multi-stack that our, that Brett had recommended.
There was, yeah, there was a forensic engineer.
Yeah, but he was recommending another test that.
Right, that didn't need to be done.
Yeah.
Right.
So this will allow us that.
So we're going to be sending the heat exchangers and all of the equipment to the manufacturer, who will be doing, who will be sending it, they said just.
There's no way, my understanding, and Fred, correct me if I misunderstood when you and Anna were explaining this to me, like, there's no way to actually look at the parts inside without fully taking it apart. So there's no way to actually get in and see what's wrong without dismantling.
They're basically sending it back to the manufacturer to have them take it apart to see what's wrong.
Yeah, that, that's correct. They will, they will have to cut it open. It's, it's a, it's a sealed heat exchanger. So that they will basically have to cut it open and destroy it in order to find out what happened.
It's like a black box in the plane. Maybe not exactly.
Okay, any more questions? All right, so I'll, is there a motion to approve the agreement with Thermo Systems for replacement of the library's chiller system, subject to final review and approval of the library attorney and to authorize the executive director, Kate, to execute the final approval, approved agreement with Thermo Systems in an amount of three hundred thirty-six thousand eighty dollars?
So moved.
Thank you. Stacy, is there a second? Thank you, Jamie. Can we please have a voice for?
Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavenger?
Yes.
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 Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Nunfeld?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Fred, thank you for being available and for having patience while we went through the other items on the agenda.
Oh, no problem. You're welcome. Everybody, have a good night.
Thanks.
Hi.
Next item on the agenda is a strategic plan update in preparation for our Saturday.
Yeah, so we will be meeting with Fast Forward Libraries on Saturday. Everyone should have hopefully gotten the highlight and learning reports to read through. Amanda Standifer from Fast Forward did give the board some homework. So if you have any questions on that in advance of Saturday, please let me know. And we look forward to seeing everyone here on Saturday.
Last chance to ask questions about Saturday? Nine AM on Saturday.
Do you have questions tomorrow, then just call me.
Yeah, last chance today. So next item is new business. The first new business item is the executive director evaluation process discussion. Kate has a sample evaluation and timeline. She's also included an updated job description. And Kate, you want to talk about those?
Sure. So I included a memo just outlining the timeline that I'm recommending for the annual review process and had also included with that, uh, an updated job description. I did send out just earlier today, a update to the update. So that was also included in your blue folders. Janet pointed out very, very well that like, hey, it doesn't actually say about the work you do at the board. And I'm like, oh my gosh, it sure doesn't. And I went back and I looked at some of the other library directors and it's like a blind spot in everyone's because the other ones also don't mention. And it's like, well, this is, it's like so obvious that it was, so anyway, so I've, I've added that to it. So thank you. This is why it's always good to have someone else read through things. And I also have with that, the, a sample evaluation form. And so one of the things that when we were talking about this in, in 2021, um, that came up was like, how, how is this process going to look? So I just wanted to talk through what I laid out and all of this, of course, is mutable. So I would, uh, every year bring the evaluation process and timeline and everything to the board so that you guys can say, yes, this still works. Let us go forth or say, no, we hate this now, let's change it. If we're moving forward with the typical process, I would then do a self-evaluation form that I would give to each of the board members. You in turn, much like when we're appointing a new trustee, would take and make your own notes. And then at the following board meeting, come together in closed session so that you could talk through the notes you have and then make a single unified document that would then be shared with me. That is something that is, I think, a little bit different than what had been proposed in the past. And it would require someone to take on the role of writing down and putting all of that together. And then after that, then, um, at the next meeting, meeting with me to go over the review. In some, um, you know, some library boards like to do it with the whole group, which is what we've typically done here. They also though, have some library boards where it's like the president and vice president meet with the director after. I have no, I just want to get feedback. So whatever way you guys want to give it to me, I am happy to receive it. And then at that point, um, after I received the review, we would work collaboratively to put together the goals for the next year. My assumption is that once we have our strategic plan in place, that is going to be the driving force behind the goals that I am going to be looking to be successful in. So that's kind of the process. One thing I do want to mention, Barbara was kind enough to meet with me earlier this week to give some suggestions and she has done this in her, in her capacity as an administrator in schools for many years. And one of the things that I've added, but I didn't get to everyone because I didn't have it completely finished, was an additional column that has observable outcomes. So in the evaluation form, it does lay out the different categories, but then the observable outcomes would be what the board should be looking for to assess whether or not I was doing the things. Would you like to add anything to that? Did I describe that in a complete enough way?
In order for us to be able to ascertain whether or not a goal was met, we have to see and firsthand what happened. What does success look like? I can sit here and there's monitoring HR trends. No, she monitored HR trends or not. So I think that what we were talking about, there are three aspects to it, which is the negotiated goals. Means the board and Kate talk about which goals are really important. And the second part is observable outcomes. And the third part is our perception of how successful that was. And so I think that, um, I mean, we had a great start on it and I think it's making sense and it's evolving.
Our strategic plan, if done correctly, I think, have some of those observable outcomes baked in, right?
Yes.
Visible outcomes.
Yes, a hundred percent. Yeah, they're not, it's, yes, absolutely. Does anyone have, um, questions on any of the items that were included in the eval form or, um, any changes that you would like to see? As I mentioned, I'll have the, um, uh, updated form hopefully, um, next week for the board. I just have to add a few more, there's a few more observable outcomes that I need to add to categories. But does anyone have any other?
Well, just based on our conversation and the presentation, for instance, um, the auditorium.
Yes.
One of the goals might be that you would include is monitoring the status or ascertaining the status of a year's worth of use of the auditorium and a recommendation going forward. I mean, things like that. So then we can see, ah, okay, here's the report, here's what she recommends.
Make the plan, say what success looks like and then verify if the plan was met. So.
It's exciting to see that this is happening.
It is.
So the job description.
See, yes.
Was there any comments, comments that you, or questions you were waiting for on the job description?
No, the job description, unless anyone has additional changes, um, should be good to go. And if the eval looks good with the understanding that we're going to be adding those categories, I'll work on updating this and then following our timeline and having a selfie valve for next month. This is not the job description that I just pulled out. So yes.
So unless there's any further comments or questions on the job description, sitting here now, is there a motion to approve the executive job description as presented and amended?
So.
Thank you, Maury. Is there a second? Thank you, Janet. Um, we don't need a.
No, you can just do a voice.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, motion passes. Um, and then next month, Kate, you're going to present?
So next month, I will present the selfie valve and then we will follow the timeline. So in March, you guys will have your homework to do.
All right, so that's the end of the new business. There is no closed session this month. Agenda building for the next month's meeting. So fiscal year twenty-five draft budget review. Anna, is that you?
That's me.
File a detailed statement of all receipts and expenditures for the previous six months.
That's me. That's me.
We'll discuss a visit of a other library. Meeting room and patron code of behavior policy updates. Kelly?
That's me.
Uh, a chiller update. And then we'll talk about whether or not we want, oh no, that was the other library visit. So the annual library tour. So next month, we will also take a tour of our library.
So wear your walking shoes.
Yes, or boots.
Or boots.
And in the same time, we'll talk about whether we want to visit another library sometime in the coming months. So one request is please come prepared to share timing or availability for visiting another library. Typically, we try and say sometime like a month or more out. So April to May. Is there anything else anyone would like to ask be included on the agenda?
We should um have me present my self eval to the board. We're not gonna really need to talk about it, but we should put the ED eval on there.
Okay, self evaluating of Kate. Alright, um, hearing and seeing no other requests, I will declare this a meeting adjourned at eight forty-one PM.